Language recording. So, welcome to, I think it's session seven. I don't even remember any longer. But chapter seven for sure, right? That's what we're going to be looking at today. So, as I'd like to do, I want to sort of bring us up to speed as to where we are. In Paul's very complicated discussion of salvation justification and so on. And you'll recall in chapter six, he was just teaching us that we're not under law, as he says, but under grace. And as a result of the grace of God, does that mean that we should continue in sin? Because after all, if we sin, then God has to pour out more grace. And wouldn't that be a good thing if God just, you know, increased his level of grace because we are sinning? Well, that's absurd, you know, it's an absurdity on its face. And he goes through that whole discussion in chapter six about that we have, because we have, in some sense, died to our sin, we should live like Messiah died, we should rise with him into a new life. And our new life should be a reflection of his life, a life that, at least endeavor, you know, in his case, he did it. But in our, in our case, we're no longer slaves to sin, so we shouldn't give in to sin. So our lives should be reflections of the grace that God has given to us. It's reminiscent of me, to me, of a saying we find, we find in the Talmud, in which it says, "Because God loved us, because of God's grace toward us, he gave us many commandments." So it's, so the many commandments of God, the fact that God gives us more instruction about how to live is a, is a function of his grace toward us and should be reflected in our desire to do those things. Okay? So, in the same way, if we have died to sin and have been raised with Messiah issue, the desire of our heart should be to reflect his image in our own lives. So, this is what he's trying to call these people, these Romans, out of. Because you'll remember, he described their former life in chapter one, verses 18 and following, and it was a life of depravity and craziness and all that other stuff. So he's calling them to a new life in Messiah issue through the, you know, I should say, a calling them to a new life in the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob through the Messiah, through the faithfulness of the Messiah. Okay? So, he goes on, he ends chapter six by telling us, "But now you've been freed from sin and enslaved to God. You derive your benefit resulting in sanctification and the outcome, eternal life." So if we enslave ourselves to God in that sense, then the outcome is a glorious future, a future of eternal life. And we get that famous saying at the very end where it says, "The wages of sin is death, but the free gift of God is eternal life" in Messiah issue. Okay? So now, however, you know, so in some sense, I feel like he was directing chapter six more, more directly to his Gentile audience. Remember now, in this letter, he's, there is, there are Gentile, there's a Gentile group, and there's a Jewish group in Rome, there's a mixed group in Rome. And part of the reason for his writing the letter is to resolve the conflict that exists between the two groups. There is conflict, and he wants to resolve that. And what he's established for us already is that both groups are under condemnation, all sinners fallen short of the glory of God, whether one is Torah observant or whether they're not. Because everybody falls, you know, falls down in some, one way or another. So we're sort of on equal footing for different reasons. So, and there has to be a greater cure, if you will, a greater solution. And then, of course, that solution is found in the Messiah, right? So, and that's what Paul is leading us to. So, however, in chapter seven, he more directly addresses the Jews. And that's evident in the first line of chapter seven, if you take a read. Let's read it carefully. And we'll see that his, he's attempting to, to raise the attention of a particular group there. So he says in verse one of chapter seven, he says, "Or do you not know, brethren? For I am speaking to those who know the law, that the law has jurisdiction over a person as long as he lives." So now, that's an indication. He said, "I am talking to you who are knowledgeable in Torah." Right? So, let me explain something to you. There's an interesting tradition you may be, that you might be interested in. When an observant Jewish person dies, man in particular, and is buried, we, we, we're always buried in a plain pine box with just a shroud. You come in the way you left. But one thing you do is you put, you'll put a talus on them. But that talus has one significant difference, that sits as a cutoff. You cut the sitzers off. Why would you think that the sitzers would be cut off as this man lies in his tomb? Right, you understand? He's free from Torah, from the obligation to fulfill the Torah, because death frees him from that. So the Jewish people understand this, and Paul understood this too. This is the principle upon which he is operating here and telling this community what, what, you know, what the deal is. All right? That the Torah only is, is only in effect for a living person, not for someone who has died. So.
I look at, I look at that as Adam and Eve were created in the Torah. The Torah was in them until their fall. And when they fell,
I don't know.
Sin, sin took over to the point, whatever millennia, we no longer even have an idea how we're supposed to live.
Well, we can get into a discussion of that at some other, at some point, okay? But.
What man was created to be?
Well, in many ways, that's, that's right. It was to, well, I will, don't get me ahead of myself, okay? So Paul makes a legal argument at the beginning of this chapter regarding, you know, the jurisdiction, if I will, the jurisdiction of Torah. That it's a legal, it's a legal thing as long as a person lives. So he gives the example, right? In verse two, "For the married woman is bound by law to her husband while he is living, but if her husband dies, she is released from the law concerning her husband." So on, and he gives the rest of the legal argument. If she marries somebody while she's, while he's still alive, then she's committing adultery. But if he's dead, then she's not, you know, it's like this whole thing. What I'm gonna go, what I want to talk to you about, and you have a diagram of it, if you have your paperwork. And we will get into this more deeply as we go through this chapter. You see this diagram? How many of you have the diagram? You guys have the diagram out there? With the notes on it? I can put it up. Let me put it up on the board here.
We've got it all printed out here.
Okay, but just for everybody's sake. Open up, will you? Open sesame. Let's see. You. Tool pane, and let me go to my diagram. I'm gonna have to reduce the size of that. Okay, so now, order my gang here. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share my screen so everybody here can see it up on the big screen that we have here too. Okay. So what I'm gonna talk to you about today, in the context of chapter seven, are these three principles and three laws. Because the word nomos is used again and again and again in this chapter. And here's the problem with the word nomos in Greek. It's, it's, it's one word that can mean a whole bunch of different things. It's only translated as law into the English language. But it means a number of different things, and we're to get into them as we go through this chapter. So here we have three principles. I'm gonna talk, talk about three principles and three laws. So you have grace, law, and sin as one set of principles, which in some ways translate into these three laws. Torah, which has a more specific meaning than just the word law, sin and death, and the spirit of life. In order to, in my estimation, in order to understand this chapter, you have to, you have to understand these three principles and three laws. So let's dive in, shall we? So, what Paul wants to do, let's, let's read the first four verses or so. So, again, I'll start from the top. "Or do you not know, brethren? For I am speaking to those who know the Torah, the law, that the law has jurisdiction over a person as long as he lives. For the married woman is bound by law to her husband while he is living, but if her husband dies, she is released from the law concerning her husband. So then, if while her husband is living, she is joined to another man, she shall be called an adulteress. But if her husband dies, she is free from the law so that she is not an adulteress, though she is joined to another man. Therefore, my brethren, you also were made to die to the law through the body of Messiah so that you might be joined to another, to him who was raised from the dead, in order that we might bear fruit for God." Now, you know, this is another one of those sayings of Paul, that if you take it in isolation, he said, he's saying, "Well, you see, Torah doesn't exist, you know, Torah's dead, you know, we don't have to deal with the law anymore." That's not, that is not what he's saying. He's going to identify an issue, a critical issue with Torah that has to be dealt with. That's what he's going to be attempting to do. So he's, in the same way, he's saying that this has jurisdiction over you in the, you know, he's using this example in constructing this argument. Let me see what my notes say. Right? Yeah, because Paul wants to answer a question. See, Paul has taught, remember that Paul has said, remember what he said at the end of chapter six? He said, "But now, having been freed from sin and enslaved to God, you derive your benefit resulting in sanctification, the outcome eternal life," and, and so on. In verse, and so in chapter six, he talked about this new gift of life in Messiah issue. So, I think Paul is in some ways anticipating a question that's a logical question for a Jewish believer in Messiah. Okay? Yeah.
Who does the husband represent? In the first, or?
Yeah.
Who does the husband represent that the wife is being freed from? Who is the wife?
Yeah.
And who is the wife married to now?
Okay. So, Paul is, Paul made a statement at the very beginning, right? He said, he said that the law has jurisdiction over a person as long as he lives, right? He makes that blanket statement at the beginning. And he uses an illustrative point from Torah in the case of a married person. In the case of a married person, he's using that as an example of how you get free. Okay? No, the husband represents a man. It, this is, to me, this is not, he is not trying to make some kind of generalized statement. Well, that's, that's the wrong terminology. He's not using it as an, it's not a metaphor, thank you. It's not a metaphor. He's using something very specific from law. So think about it, I'm a lawyer, and I want, and I want to establish that there's a precedent for, for my thinking. So, I take a case from law. All right, a woman and a man are married as long as one of them is still alive. When one of them dies, they're no longer married. So he's saying, this is a principle that applies across the board in, about the Torah.
So this is strictly legal, not hermeneutic that you're using?
That's, that's the way I'm gonna view it at this point. Let's take, let's, let's go through his argument. So he's saying, if a person dies, they're no longer obligated to the Torah. Now, he is going to say, and he just said it, he just said it, he just said it. "Therefore, you were also made to die to the law through the body of Messiah so that you might be joined to another, to him who was raised from the dead." So we're talking about Messiah. Okay, now, I suppose, I suppose you could use that as a, as a metaphor. No, no, no.
We're not reading into this.
Well, listen, if you, Deborah, if you want to use that as what he meant, you know, he's saying, look. No, no, okay, so let me, so let me do a little, little Jewish hermeneutic. He's using kol ve'komair, okay, which is a kind of an argument that says, you see? Here's one example, the great, so if that's true, then this is more true, so much more, so it could be used as a, as a kol ve'komair argument. Okay, so I'm not arguing with it. I'm not saying to, saying to anybody that Messiah issue doesn't trump law. Hey, but he does. Okay, if, if, if that were the case, if you're gonna make me make a choice, that's the case. Although that's not the case that he makes. He's gonna make another case, okay? Even though he says this, you're dying to the, to the, to the law in order to live in the, to the spirit of Messiah, right? Now, having said that, uh, let's, okay. He's saying, so I'm anticipating a question that I would have asked if I were, if I were one of the addresses of this letter. Okay, that being, wait a minute, Paul, are you saying to me, God gave us the Torah at Sinai, and at Sinai, he told us that these were eternal, that these things are eternal in nature, forever. Is, why, my question is to you, why is that not sufficient? What does being under grace mean as opposed to the Torah? Why is not under Torah sufficient for me, for all that we need? Because God gave us this stuff, he told us to do it, and he punished us when we didn't. You know, like, give me a reason here, you know, why this becomes insufficient. It's a, it's a natural question, and by the way, it's a question Jews still ask. And I think they ask it legitimately, okay? So Paul has to give a sufficient answer. Remember my diagram there? Grace, law, sin, Torah, sin, death, you know, okay? So, let's get into it. So now, it says, "Therefore, my brethren, you were made to die to the law through the body of Messiah so that you might be joined to another, to him, to Messiah, who was raised from the dead, in order that we might bear fruit for God." Okay? So, the question arises, wait a minute, so why? You know, interject a question right there between verses four and five. Why is Torah insufficient? Since it's the word of God? Okay, now, let him answer it. He says, "For while we were in this, in the flesh, the sinful passions which were aroused by the law were at work in the members of our body to bear fruit for death." He tells us the problem, is a problem. All right? The problem is that there's this thing, sin, which is, which is problematic in the doing of Torah. He says, "While we were in the flesh, the sinful passions which were," and my translation says, "aroused by the law, were at work in the members of our body." Somehow, so let's think about how that works. You know, God creates a righteous standard for us in the Torah. And somehow, in the striving for that righteous stand, if that's what we're doing, it arouses inside of us something which is contrary to that standard. You know, Paul later on is gonna say, "I wouldn't have known about coveting, except that the Torah's taught, you know, tells me about coveting, and I found out that I covet." Okay, in other words, that these, these things that are innate in me are revealed, and not only revealed, but exacerbated by the, by the Torah itself. It's almost like, I'll use an example, you're a little, and it has to do with our defiant spirit. That, that I think is innate in human beings, frankly. You know, you're driving on a lonely road in the middle of nowhere, and the sign says 55 miles an hour. Oh, no. Nah, this is a straight road, I'm going, you know, 90 miles an hour.
You don't need a lonely road for that now.
Okay, yeah, you understand? It, it, we, the, the limit is set for us, but we don't obey the limit. And I'm using a silly example, but you get the, you get the point. We just have to go faster than 55 miles an hour. I believe in the, I believe in the principle of sin. And Paul's gonna explain that principle for us in this, in this, in this chapter. I think, I, let me, let, so let's go back to the, so I always have to go back to creation. Creation is always, I think a week or two ago, I showed you, yet, I explained to you the difference between yesa hara and yetzah ha'tov. And, you know, the word yetzer, which means to form. In the creation story, when God formed man out of the dust of the earth, the way yetzer is spelled is with two yods, it's very Hebrew, Hebraic here. But it's the only time in the whole Bible where it's spelled like that. So the rabbis, you know, interpret this to mean that when God created man, he gave him two yetzers. He gave them these, a yetzah ha'tov, for a good inclination, and a yetzah hara, a evil inclination. That both of these things are existent in man. And you have to believe that, because after all, how could Adam and Eve disobey God if they didn't have it in them? It wasn't already potentially in their, in their lives.
Isn't there a verse in the Bible somewhere, I remember reading it, maybe it was the translations as well, verse in Psalms, where it says, "God said," where, you know, "God says, I created both good and evil."
Of course, yes, that's, I believe, Isaiah 45. "I am the creator of good and evil."
But does that mean he imputed that into man? And he said that his creation was not just good, he said it was very good.
Yeah, very good, that's perfect.
You know, he defies what good is, and good isn't evil, and evil isn't good.
I know, he was very, God was pleased with his creation. And yet, and yet, and yet. But we have, we have, we have to ask the question, don't we? We have to ask the question, where does Adam and Eve's disobedience come from? Now, we can blame it on the devil if you want to, but he didn't make them say what they said. They said what they said because they wanted to say it, you know, you know. Eve herself decided, oh, this is desirable to, it looked good, it was desirable to make one wise, I think. So, you know, you know, so something in her allowed her to make that decision.
To be too.
It was, no, no, yes, there was a level of deception, but she in the end made the decision.
When I bring up these things, I'm, I'm not being argumentative, because I, I, I study and I write and I research. And so I'm doing a paper on this very subject right now. And I like talking about it. I just, that's just not my presupposition. I give the odds, I understand. I don't believe that God imputed evil into Adam.
Somebody's got a long argument. Okay.
Let me give you an example, let me give an example.
Because she took it in.
I see a piece of chocolate on the table, and I know I'm not supposed to eat it, but I take it anyhow and I eat it, because I'm serving it to me too.
Friends. I don't, don't let, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get sidetracked. But just so we understand the source of sin, which I think is very important, instead of blaming the devil for everything that goes wrong, let's understand, now, we have three enemies, the world, the flesh, and the devil. Okay? So, the fact is that we have our own problems to conquer.
Well, we have the devil.
Everybody, everybody, take a breath and let me deal with this question for a moment. Okay, I'm trying to find the portion in James where James tells us, tells us quite explicitly where he at least thinks that sin comes from. Because I'm getting old, I'm losing the reference. Where in the world is that?
What are you trying to refer to, evil, or?
No, he talks about the source of sin, James. Okay, yeah, do you know where the?
He was talking about every man is punished by his own lusts and desires, but no, that, God doesn't.
Okay, here it is, chapter one, verse 13 and following. He says, "Let no one say when he is tempted, 'I am being tempted by God, for God cannot be tempted by evil, and he himself is not tempted.' But each one is tempted when he is carried away and enticed by what? His own lusts. Then when lust has conceived, it gives birth to sin. And when sin is accomplished, it brings forth death." This is the source.
So what is he saying, though?
Who's he?
You, Jane, what, you, you exhorted us in service today for people to use their gifts.
Yeah.
This is mine, so I'm, I'm trying to participate.
Well, I, I appreciate.
And I'm engaging, I know that people get irritated, but this is, this is my gift. These are, these are some of my gifts.
It's okay.
So I wanna have liberty, I don't wanna feel.
No, no, I don't want you to feel that, but here's what I, understand something, everybody needs to understand this, that I am giving you guys a different paradigm. It's okay to question it, but, but let's understand the paradigm first, and then take it apart. Okay, let me finish the argument, and then your questions will be welcome, because then we can look at it from that framework. If I have to, if I'm, if I'm, all I'm doing is trying to, you know, do a, you know, a defense of each statement that gets made in the Torah, in, in, in Paul's letter, I'll never be able to complete the argument that I'm trying to make, and then have you examine it from that point of view. In other words, you understand one thing that is always clear to, is clear to me from the whole 66 books of the Bible. The word of God stands forever. The Torah is an eternal document. It will never go away. Now, there are certain things that are complete in it, like the sacrifice of Messiah. But there are other things which are not. It, therefore, it stands on its own. So now, what we want to understand, when Paul says something that seems contrary to that, we have to understand in the context of that larger picture in which the word of God is eternal. Otherwise, Paul is wrong. So, let's, so that's my, that's the point of view that I'm coming from. So let me make that argument, and then, if you have a question regarding, wait, wait a minute, what about this? Then we can try and look at it from that point of view, okay?
And the word is flawless.
Yeah, I believe that. I believe it's a flawless, well, flawless, you know, that's a loaded word too. But it's certainly authoritative. In other words, the way it speaks, I listen, okay? Or at least I make my effort to listen. Okay, so let's, with that in mind, let's continue with Paul's argument in the seventh chapter. So now, he asks a question, so the, I inserted a question between verses four and five. Right? While, you know, what, you know, what's wrong with the Torah? That it's, okay, turn up, well, Paul's gonna ask a question. So he says, "While we were in the flesh, the sinful passions which were aroused by the Torah." So he says, "While we were in the flesh, the sinful passions which were aroused by the Torah were at work in the members of our body to bear fruit for death." So in other words, there's something in me that's mucking up the works. So he says, "But now," verse six, "but now we have been released from the law, having died to that by which we were bound, so that we serve in the newness of spirit, not oldness of the letter." So something has happened to change the equation. This is what Paul is telling us. So in verse seven, he anticipates the next, my telling him, "You're full of it." Because that's what I'm gonna say. You're full of it. In verse seven, he says, "What shall we say then? Is the law sin? In other words, is there something wrong with law? Because you can infer that, and people have inferred it and continue to infer it even now." Okay? Lots of folks do that. So, is there something, "May it never be. On the contrary, I would not have come to no sin except through the law." For I would have not known, I would not have known about coveting, for instance, if the law had not said, 'You shall not covet.'" So he's saying, now, by the way, this is not the purpose of Torah. We talked about what the purposes of Torah were. This is not a primary purpose, this is a result of Torah. The fact that we know what sin is is a result of the fact that God gave us the Torah. Okay? We would not know, you know, if there wasn't a 55 mile an hour sign, we wouldn't know we were breaking the law by going 65. Okay? But once the, you know, the bar is set, then we know what we can do and what we cannot do. So now, this is what, and this is a result of God giving us His Word. Now, we know what's right and what's wrong. Now, let's go back to, again, let's go back to the creation story. And God gives Adam and Eve this wonderful place to live, sets, you know, all these trees, the tree of life in the midst of the garden. He also puts another tree, a tree of the knowledge of good and evil, yes? And he says, "Don't eat from this tree." But unfortunately, they do. Right? What did they learn? In other words, something happened to them when they ate that fruit that changed everything. Certainly changed their relationship with God, changed their relationship with each other, changed their relationship with everything. So something did happen as a result of eating from that. In fact, God Himself says, "Now man is like us, knowing good and evil." Right? Now man is like us. What did it do for us, though? We understood better what was good and evil, maybe, but it didn't change our desire to do evil, right? It didn't do that. Something happened, there was, again, something happened when we ate from that fruit, but it didn't result in good for us. Yeah? Something, so.
Does that open the mind, the eyes of our minds?
Look, I don't know precisely what the translation, here's the thing. I would, let me make an argument that I believe that God wanted us to eat from that tree at one time, at some point. Not then, not then. They were still infants, if you will. And here's why I say it. I say it because God gave us a job. He said, "Be fruitful, multiply, and fill the earth, and have dominion over the planet." I want you to understand what that means. Think about it carefully, people. I have dominion, I have rule, I must rule this planet. Adam and Eve were to be the rulers of God's creation. I want one of you explain to me how a ruler can rule if they don't know the difference between good and evil. They cannot do it. So there would have been a moment when God would have said, "Children, you are ready to taste from this fruit." Okay?
I have a question. So dominion, when you say rule, you mean rule of law? And the other question is?
Well, you tell me what you think it means.
Did they know, did they know what good and evil was before they ate the apple? Did they know what, did they know what sin? I just have a question, did they know what good and evil and sin was before they ate the fruit? Whatever people want to make fruit, because people have different concepts of what that represents.
Yeah.
Did they know before that?
No. And the reason I say that is because after they ate, then it was that God said, "Now they are like us, knowing good and evil." So I must presume that he meant that before then, they didn't know.
So when you say dominion, doesn't that mean stewardship? It means ownership?
All of that.
It means they are caretakers?
Yes.
They are over the animal kingdom?
Correct.
Over the aquatic kingdom? They're over every system in the earth. Does that imply that that means that there has to be something bad?
No.
In order for them to have dominion?
Uh.
I can have dominion and not have to have it over something bad.
No, not necessarily, but you will still be a decision maker. And how do you decide between what is good and what is not?
Because they have wisdom, because God created them in His own image.
Then if He created them in their image, then how come they didn't have the knowledge of good and evil?
Because He didn't want them to.
Oh, okay, and never.
He told them not to.
And he would, and he would, okay, and he would never want them to, okay. Let me get some other folks involved here.
I was trying to say that I was answering a little question just now. What happened when they ate from the tree of good and evil, they felt like they separated from God? And therefore, you know, I mean, new rules at that point.
New rules, when you say new.
In other words, now the relationship with God has changed.
Yes, well, for sure.
So.
And what Messiah Shua came to rectify. Yeah.
I get the point that has to do with implications. They know the law, they have no idea of the consequence when you break in the law. It's when everything changed.
Yeah.
So, it's not too wrong to know that, "Don't do it," but after you close, now you have consequences. And that's when they become like that, they have power. It's power, they empower them to make decisions, has to do with their free will. Like you say, in the future, they might be applying in the future for now.
I'm convinced that God intended, He wouldn't have put the tree in there just as a trap. So, so, you know, so there was, I think there was, I can't prove this, but it was intentionality, just based on the way God interacted with them. He said, "Look, you know, I'm gonna put you in charge of everything, but, you know, but start with this." And then there'll be a time when, maybe, you know, God intended, well, who knows how God intended? I don't wanna presume on God, but I only know what happened. I know what happened, and what happened was, they made a decision because they saw a way to gain power. A power that God did not give them to begin with. And maybe they thought, well, you know, maybe He won't mind. But, you know, whatever they were thinking, it didn't work out.
Lucifer was already on the scene before they got there, so the dominion also implied in what we have in this new covenant. To have dominion, he even told, he even said it to Cain. He said, "Cain, you know, sin lies and waits at the door, but I desire that you would have dominion or have authority over it." So I believe that God wanted his, He wanted, there's a word called abdu. Do you know what that word means?
No, I don't, not.
I believe it's in Greek, but for me to believe that God wanted to break fellowship and to break the relationship that He had with Adam and Eve by setting up a sin trap that would separate them from their father.
No, that would never happen.
I just.
Never, that's my point. He would never want that. That's right. So there must be another purpose for that tree being there.
Yeah.
You understand? All right, let's get back to, I'll never get finished with this. We're studying Romans, we're not studying the creation right now, please. You're gonna insist, okay?
What's the first command?
Love, yeah, 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 okay.
Love is a choice. Adam and Eve didn't have a choice. They were in there with a perfect relationship with God. But after the fall.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're getting so sidetracked. I want everybody to let me get back on track, please. Otherwise, I'm gonna send you all home, I'm gonna go home and have a drink. Okay? So let's get back to this, all right?
We tried to drink.
Okay. Verse seven. "What shall we say then? Is the law sin? May it never be. On the contrary, I would not have come to no sin except through the law. For I would not have known about coveting if the law had not said, 'You shall not covet.'" "But sin, taking opportunity through the commandment, produced in me coveting of every kind; for apart from the law, sin is dead." So he's saying, here's a principle. There's a principle of sin. There's a principle of law. In other words, that law sets standards, and law has jurisdiction. Okay? But there's another principle in the world, sin. And this is what I'm saying, this sin was there from the start in man. If that were not true, Adam and Eve would never have sinned, and somebody else would have done it later on because something happened. No, it was there from the get-go. How did it get there? It wasn't just because, you know, the evil one came along and created it. That's not how it happens. God is the maker of all things. And you have to give Him credit for this too. Sorry. You know, He even says it in Isaiah 45. So, right, it's the problem of free will. Didn't you see, didn't you see the Matrix? Didn't you see the Matrix movie? That's the problem, the problem is choice. Right, we can choose. God wanted His creation to have free will. And as a result, that means you have the will to make a bad choice, which is precisely what they did. But it was in them from the start.
When you're saying how did sin get there, do you mean in the beginning?
Yeah. Yetzer. Do, look at my study on yetzer. Double yod. It's there for a reason. The only way, it's only spelled that way once in the whole Bible, there's a reason why.
That creates more relationships, not to be a robot.
Right, so He gave us choice. He gave us choice. All right. So now, verse eight, it says, "But sin, taking opportunity through the commandment, produced in me coveting of every kind; for apart from the law, sin is dead." So, there's sin, this principle of sin, when it interacts with law, with the law code, produces something in me. Because the law code in and of itself cannot overcome it. Okay? Just as God's command, remember something, God spoke to Adam, and He said to him, "Of all the trees in the garden you may eat, but of the tree that is in the midst of the garden, the tree of good and evil, you shall not eat." So even the Word of God, right out of the mouth of the Holy One, was not enough to stop Adam from doing what he did. Because there's something, there's this thing, sin, which, you know, is a problem. But it's a problem because God wants free agents. He doesn't want automatons. So something else has to happen. Okay? So he goes, he says, "I was alive apart from the law." You know, before law came, he's talking about this before, before law came, "But when the commandment came, sin became alive." How did that happen? The commandment created sin? That would be an abomination.
Could you say that the Torah always existed even at the beginning of creation?
Well, now you sound like a rabbi. You know, the Torah was one of the things that God created from the beginning of time.
Right, you should have said the opposite. The man wasn't created for survival. So the way I see that is, God didn't create Torah, and there's another God to create man to fulfill it, which is what the rabbi.
No, 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 right, I agree with that. I agree with that. The Torah came after. In a response to man's behavior, frankly, it is me. So, you know, where everyone is completely moral and ethical and wonderful, you don't need laws. You need, when people are evil, then you need law. You know, that's basically it. Who's libertarian in here? That's her. So, so, so I'm fascinated by this. "But when the commandment came, sin became alive and I died." It's a fascinating thing for him to say. That somehow, in the commandment, something else was ignited in me that created my will to defy it. And as a result, sin became alive and I died, he says.
No, actually, I think it's my opinion. When, if no law, there's no sin. It's what Paul tried to tell. And when commandments come, how you recognize the sin? You, everybody, before, in the first chapters, he proved that everybody under the sin, not even who have law or who don't have law. Jewish people under the law, but they under the sin anyway. And Gentiles under the sin anyway. But sin cannot be recognized without the law. The first role of the truth or Torah would define the sin. And it's, what's the sin, definition of the sin, it's lawlessness, breaking of the commandments of God. But what he tried to tell you, he tried to tell you, there is a, "I didn't recognize the sin, but the law comes, and I recognize the sin, and the law kills me." It's another role of the law.
Yeah, right.
To kill me means, how do you call, convict me to the, because the wage of the sin is death, right? Yeah, so the law kills me. And he tried to explain that Messiah Shua takes your death.
Yes.
The same thing in chapter seven, in the beginning, when he tried to apply this idea about marriage, right? Until the woman belongs, when men and women became married, they belonged to them, belonged to each other. They won. What happened with Israel in chapter three of Jeremiah? Israel separated from God and go to another gods. So to be able to return Israel to God either two ways. Either life should die, because adultery, adulterers necessarily need to be thrown to death, right? She, according to the law, she must die. But God died for, because, instead of her, He died for us, and take our death sentence.
Yes, yes, I agree with all of that. Well, I disagree.
And he turned back his wife. It's what happened, what he's just trying to talk about.
Well, yeah, Hosea is an even better example of it.
I have a question. So you're saying that there was no recognizable sin before the law, but Cain's sin was recognized, and the people before Noah were joining.
Yeah, but what did God do to Cain? Cain, you know, he said, you're right, there was no law. But God speaks to him directly and says to him, "Listen, don't do what you're gonna do. If you do it, it's a problem for you." And ultimately, but what happened? Cain does not die, nor does God put a death sentence on him. He, you know, he's banished from his family because he killed his own brother. You know, but it's not, it wasn't the same as, you know, the death penalty, if you will.
But the people of Noah's time, they got the death penalty.
Because God said, "Now, if a man kills somebody, kill him." God gave them that right. God said, "If a man kills another man, then by his blood will be shed." So there was a direct commandment to deal out the death penalty in the case of a capital crime. So, but prior to that, you know, people killing each other left and right. You know, that's one of the reasons God had to drown the world. Okay, let's, I wanna get to my point here.
This is wrong if you wanna talk, but you elaborate on it. Since it's related to the text and what you're talking about in Romans 7. Romans 1 and 12 and 13?
Read it, please.
"For as many as have sinned without law will also perish without law, and as many as have sinned in the law will be judged by the law. The naffing ears of the law are just in the sight of God, but the doers of the law will be justified. For when Gentiles, who do not have the law, by nature do the things in the law, these, although..." For when Gentiles who do not have the law by nature do the things in the law, these, although not having the law, are law to themselves, who show the work of the law written in their hearts.
Yeah.
Jeremiah, their conscience also bearing witness and, I'm sorry, and between themselves their thoughts accusing or else excusing them in the day when God will judge the secrets of men by Jesus Christ according to my gospel. I just want you to elaborate on that in the context of the law.
Well, what Paul is, the Paul's argument in chapter one, chapter two, chapter three. Well, he's, he's, he addresses both Gentiles, he addresses Gentiles, he addresses Jews. His, his, is, the, the generalized argument there is that everyone is condemned. Ultimately, he concludes at the end of the, see, this is the problem with Paul. Never say with one word, well, you can say with a hundred. And, you know, and he, he, he's making an argument. Ultimately, the argument is this, both Gentiles and Jews are under condemnation because nobody can stand before a righteous God. That's what he's driving at with all of this convoluted argument. You know, he's not, he's not arguing because this business of, you know, Gentiles who do the law, even though they don't know the law, you know, but they have the law written, there is none. There are none. It's, that's his conclusion, none, no, nobody. His conclusion at the end is nobody fits this bill. I'm painting a picture, but nobody lives, nobody's like that. That's his whole, that's, that's the conclusion he draws at the end of that, that long argument. Yes, in the end, it's, everybody is, you know, everybody needs the grace of God. This is where he's going. Everybody needs God's grace because all have sinned and fallen short. That's, that's like the closing argument he makes. He says, all have sinned and fallen short of the glory of God. So, you know, he paints a picture of the ideal Gentile, but he also paints a picture of a Jew, you know, you know, you know all of this stuff and you don't do it anyway. I mean, every, and, and his conclusion is, we're all sinners, we all need the grace of God, and God has got to provide a way for us, or we're condemned. Yeah, but, but, but that's, but that's Jeremiah. And we're gonna get to that.
But that's where he's getting it.
Gonna get there if I ever get, if I ever get to that. Precisely, if we would ever get. Alright, so we have this business, so now we've had two, two of these things coming. We have law and we have sin. Because sin is doing this thing that I, that is messing me up. The law is sin taking the opportunity through the commandment produced in me coveting of every kind and so on. Am I getting buzzed by these folks? I don't know, is his phone going off? Alright. So he says in verse nine, "I was once alive apart from the law, but when the commandment came, sin became alive and I died." Because now I have to, now I have to live according to the standard, but there's something wrong. Because sin became alive, along with the commandment. You getting a picture here? Is something forming in your mind between the commandment and sin? Okay? And he says, "And this commandment, which was to result in life, proved to result in death for me." Because the commandment, as it flickered into existence, sin flickers into existence along with it. Okay? So it says in verse eleven, "For sin, making an opportunity through the commandment, deceived me and through it killed me." So the sin is, it's almost like a a being of something. It has an intellect or a purpose.
Even, even this is what they say, then whatever you eat, it's what comes from you. It's talking about the evil we have in.
Right, yeah. Right. I mean, we can talk about Torah all we want, you know, we could talk about, you know, the commandments and the laws and all this other stuff, but something key, and we can all, and we can love it. But it's, but it's, but something is wrong with, there's something wrong. Okay? Alright?
Can you expand on verse ten? And this commandment, which was to result in life,
Yeah.
proved to result in death for me.
Right.
Which commandment are they talking about?
Well, he's talking about any commandment.
Okay.
You know, he's talking about the law in general.
Okay.
Okay? Because he, he, he's gonna get there. You know, I maybe we should have read the, I should have read the whole chapter first and then we should have discussed it. Because we're trying to break it down verse by verse, but the problem is, you gotta see, you have to see the forest and then you can mess with the trees, you know what I mean? So he goes on to say, verse twelve, he says, "So then the law is holy and the commandment is holy and righteous and good." Now, I want you to put verses eleven and twelve together for a moment and see if your eyes don't cross. Okay? He goes, "For sin, taking an opportunity through the commandment, deceived me and through it killed me. So then the law is holy and the commandment is right, holy and righteous and good." How did that happen? Well, okay, so let's, let's use a little logic here. So if the law is holy, what does he say? How, the holy and commandment is holy and righteous and good? That's not the problem. Torah is not the problem. Something else is the problem.
Right.
Right?
Could you sum that up by saying, we are responsible for the choice of people?
Well, yes, of course, but let's get to why. Let's get to why. It's not the law. Right.
The law is good.
So he goes, right, so he goes to say, "Therefore, did that which is good become a cause of death for me?" No! "May it never be," he says. Rather, it was sin in order that it might be shown to be sin by affecting my death through that which is good. So you have this, this, this thing here, sin up there, which is, which is interfering with the, with the efficacy of law. Because the law, remember what I told you, the three, the three, the three purposes of Torah. The three main purposes of Torah. One, two, to, for Israel to be a kingdom of priests and a holy nation, that, that God might dwell in the midst of his creation. That Israel would be the mediator of the relationship between God and the world.
Right, bliss.
Right? And third, and thirdly, that the Torah was given to bless Israel. Because God loved us, he gave us many commandments. So we didn't live like savages. Okay? So they were, it was meant for blessing, but in order to be blessed, you have to do it. You all remember that in the, at the end of Deuteronomy in twenty-eight and twenty-nine, twenty-eight, chapter twenty-eight. You know, you got the blessings and the curses. So that means blessings if you do it, but if you don't, problems. Big problems.
He couldn't possibly condemn the law because he's the indicting God.
Well, no, right. No, never. He was, he was trying to identify for both Jew and Gentile. Why more is needed than the written code? Because after all, Moses, listen, ladies and gentlemen, I'll read it to you. I'll read it to you and you can, you can deal with it yourself. But in Moses' final address to the people, the children of Israel, he says, find it here.
So the main idea is to identify that sin and make a choice. Even Peter talked about it. Paul was a little confusing sometimes in his writings.
This is what Moses said to the children of Israel at Sinai, on the banks of the Jordan, before he, before he left them and before they entered the law. "But this commandment, which I command you today, is not too difficult for you, nor is it out of reach. It is not in heaven that you should say, who will go up to heavens for us to get it, for us and make us hear it that we may observe it? Nor is it beyond the sea that you should say, who will cross over the sea for us to get it, and get it for us and make us hear it that we may observe it? But the word is very near you, in your mouth, in your heart, that you may observe it. See, I have set before you today life and prosperity and death and adversity. In that command, in that I command you today to love your, the Lord your God, to walk in his ways and keep his commandments." He's telling, so he tells, he goes on to say, "I call heaven and earth against, to witness against you today, but I have set before you life and death, blessing and the curse. So choose life in order that you may live, you and your descendants." So he, that's Deuteronomy, chapter thirty. And so Moses had every intention for the children of Israel to follow God's commandments. You know, and he said, he said before you life and death. The problem is that later on, Moses predicts that they're not gonna do it. Okay? So he understood the sin principle. That was already there. Even though the Torah itself, if one could observe it, can live. Okay? That's what he tells us. But there's a problem. Rather, it was sin in order that it might be shown to be sin by affecting my death through that which is good, so that through the commandment, sin would become utterly sinful. Because sin must, sin has to be done away with. And that's not something that can be done away with just like that. Or, or by me getting control of myself. Okay? You know, self mastery, as some would call it.
Kennedy done away with by doing the whole law? If you could keep the commandment of God, I just a question. Will sin go away? If we do everything the law says?
Okay. Let me say, I don't believe that that was God, the lost purpose. Remember, I told you what the three purposes were. None of them was that. Okay, by the, but I understand, but, but, no, no, but I understand something, I understand something. Did God know that the children of Israel were gonna sin? How do we know that? Forget about the fact that he's God and he knows everything anyway. I'm just saying, how do we, how can we, how can we, you know, discern that? I'll tell you how. Because God gave us sacrifices so that when we sin, we could get, we could, we could have atonement. Right? He provided atonement because he knew that we were gonna, we were gonna sin. The sin that ultimately caused Israel's separation from God was idolatry. Not that they, you know, did other bad things. It was, it was, it was their abandonment of the Lord. They chose other gods. That's what drove them out of the land of Israel. When they were finally driven out by the bad blood. Okay? So we have to understand that sin, you know, the Torah, obeying the Torah perfectly, every jot and tittle of the law is not the point, and it never was the point. Okay? The Torah was not given for salvation. It was, it was given for, for the life that God wanted Israel to live, not for salvation as we understand it. Because it cannot do that. It wasn't made for that. Something else has to happen. Why? Because sin, this principle of sin, this thing, that's what's gotta be dealt with. That's the issue that has to be dealt with. Which Torah does not deal with. It deals with it by covering it. That's what it does. It covers it and allows Israel to be pure enough, if they do it, if they do what God tells them to do, you know, to allow God's presence to remain in their midst, allows them to continue their priesthood, allows them to live in blessing if they'll do, you know, the majority of it. Okay? But it doesn't deal with this problem. It just covers it. Okay? So. Well, no, no, until, well, no, no, God forever intended to deal with the problem of sin, this thing up there, another way. That, that was, that was always God's intention.
Okay? Something real quick, but I read something years ago about the Torah way to see the sin. And that is pathetic way, the Greek way. Let's say, at the end when you judge is white and black for the great mentality or way to think. The Torah is like an arrow pointing to a target. So it can be like that, the idea is too, and it's two different views, and that's a problem that I, when I see this in many churches, the way they see everything like, like.
Yeah, well, we were all products of Western, Gregor Roman, Western thinking, you know. So we all have that problem. Anyway, let's get on with Paul's issue. So he says, so now he's trying, we have to deal with this problem that doesn't allow the law to work the way we, you know, we think it's supposed to work. So this third principle is required, grace. Grace is always the way it worked. It was the grace of God that chose Israel. It was the grace of God that maintained Israel through, through all of their trials and tribulations and all. It was the grace of God that did not destroy the Jewish people when they went idolatrous. He could have and started up a whole new group of people, but he did not do that. Instead, he has a promise that all of Israel will be saved. We're gonna get to that. Okay? So that's grace. Okay? And this is how these things can tie together, these three principles. So now, let's see how they operate in the new, in the new covenant, if you will. Okay? So Paul goes on to say in verse fourteen, says, "For we know that the law is spiritual, but I am a flesh sold to bondage to sin." This is the human condition. Okay? Because we have this principle of sin that has to be dealt with before we can have resolution. So I'm in, I'm in a, I'm in a bind. We're all in a bind. He says, "For what I'm doing, I do not understand, for I am not practicing what I would like to do, but I'm doing the very thing I hate." And by the way, I should, I should interject here. Because Paul, this is, Paul, I don't know whether, I don't think Paul had this, you know, looked, was this like schizophrenic as this individual that's gonna be described right now is, or was. But, you know, well, you know, I'm not sure. I, I think he's just explaining the, the problem in general.
Well, don't forget what he did before he met the Lord.
Oh, he thought he was perfect before.
Yeah, but he sinned an awful lot.
He didn't think he was sinning. He thought he was doing God's work. But, you know, no, 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 that's not, no, he's talking about the human condition. He's talking, from fourteen on, you know, he's basically talking about the human condition. We're all, we all face this problem, and I think we can all identify with it, by the way. I know I can, let's put it that way. Okay? "For what I'm doing, I do not understand, for I'm not practicing what I'd like to do, but I'm doing the very thing I hate." In other words, you know, we, with one sin, we wanna do every, we wanna do the right thing, but something, you know, there's something, you know, you know, my temper, my whatever, my temperament, you know, or people, you know, human beings just aggravate me, you know. He says, "But if I do the very thing I do not wanna do, I agree with the law confessing that the law is good." In other words, if the law is creating this standard, but I'm not meeting it, I'm proving, I'm proving the point, you know, just by my, my insanity. Right?
And he also says that the law is spiritual. But he's carnal, he's putting it out there.
Yeah, yeah, right. There's a problem.
It's nothing wrong with the law is.
Right, he's saying the law is good, right? So he says, "So now, no longer am I the one doing it, but it's sin." Again, he's talking about this sin which dwells in him now. This is another one of those statements that I, you know, I actually wrestle with because I, 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 you know, what does he mean when he says it's not me but sin?
It's kinda nice, it's an out, right?
You know, it's almost, right, it's like an excuse, why I'm not responsible. You know? Right. So what he, what he's, what he's arguing here is about this principle of sin. This principle which ultimately becomes the law. Okay? He says, "For I know that nothing good dwells in me, that is, in my flesh. For the willing is present in me." In other words, there's, you know, the spirit is willing, but the flesh is weak, right? For the willing is present in me. In other words, there's, you know, the spirit is willing, but the flesh is weak, right? The doing of the good is not. For the good I want to do, I don't do, but I practice the very evil I don't want. You know, this guy sounds like he's nuts. But I'm doing the very thing I don't want to do. I'm no longer the one doing it, but sin which dwells in me. So again, there's this principle that it keeps going on. So he goes on to say, I find then the principle that evil is present in me, the one who wants to do good. So there's this thing, this is yet, and again, in Jewish tradition, it would be the yetzah hara, this evil inclination that we have, which, which drives us to do stupid things, selfish things. You know, human beings are very selfish people, and we're very, I would, let me say it this way, we are very self unaware, if you understand what I mean. We're not, we're not even aware of our dumb, dumbness sometimes, the things that are wrong. You know, we look at ourselves in the mirror and we see something, you know, we're, we're, we're disillusioned. We're the most, we're very deluded species.
We'll be able to take this step and remember what this guy was saying. This guy, because I'm not that seen by that person, because I, I mean, you can, you can do whatever the law is, but inside, you still, still.
Yeah, and we're, and we're, and we're delu-, and we're self-delusional. I mean, I, I mean, I really believe that about us. You know, we, we think better, we think more of ourselves than we should most of the time, and then, then other times we don't. You know.
Everything's fine, every moment's fine.
So anyway, he's, he finds then the principle that evil is present, the one who wants to do good. So we have this principle of evil, which the Torah cannot overcome. The Torah on itself cannot overcome, and it cannot overcome because it was not meant to overcome it. This is the thing I want everybody to understand about the relationship between grace and the Torah, between law and grace, and, you know, and, you know, and all this stuff that, you know, juxtaposing two things that were not meant to be put in opposition to one another.
Why is it always verse versus, why is it always law versus grace, grace versus law?
There's a long, there's a long, long history, going all the way back to the church fathers. Well, listen, I think, look, here's what I, here's my theory. Reading the New Testament, reading, reading the New Testament, this is my theory. That in the early days of the, of the Jesus movement, the movement for Yeshua, particularly when non-Jews came into the picture. See, prior to non-Jews getting into the picture, there's no discussion about law and, you know, like, if you look at the early parts of the Book of Acts, there's no discussion about this at all. It shows up only after Gentiles get into the picture. Because Jews were not, no, 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 Jews, Jews, Jewish people were not debating that Torah was their way of life and the way, God's commandments, and they weren't, there was no debate. There was none of this, you know, like, some of you may remember, months, months and months ago, I did this sermon because this, this one pastor, what's his name? Andy Stanley, did this whole thing about how, and he started, one of his first points was that the, that when, when the early, the 12 apostles thought that what Yeshua was telling them was to get rid of the law, they don't need the law anymore. And they have, and they were confused about it. And I'm like, there is no discussion about the veracity of Torah before you get to chapter 15 of, of the Book of Acts. That's when Gentiles came up as a subject and their role in the, in the new covenant. So that issue never arose among the Jewish, the Jewish believers in Messiah Yeshua, because they saw no, one was not the same as the other. See, so my point is, and it only arises afterwards. And then it seems that parties arose. And there were those who believed that you had to continue to obey the Torah, and there were those who said, no, you don't have to obey. Okay, now we know that the decision of the apostles was that you didn't have to obey. The Gentiles did not have to obey. Okay, so this question continually arises in the ministry of Paul. By the way, James never talks about it, Peter never talks about it. The other, the other apostles, the letter that he was, really doesn't talk about that. That's not talking about that issue. It, it's, it's, it's in the letters of Paul because Paul was the apostle to the Gentiles.
But he didn't need to clarify or explain the relationship between the law and Yeshua and grace to the Jews. He didn't need to.
No, no, he's never, no. Well, he's talking because this, there's a, listen, again, let's not lose the forest for the trees. There's a conflict in this congregation. There's, there, there are two factions in this community that are splitting this community apart, and Paul wants to rectify that. He wants to bring these people together. So he's showing that, he's going to show them their common ground. We're going to get there eventually. You know, to, to the common ground, when he gets through with all this theology, he's going to get to them in verse, in chapter 12, 13, 14, 15, about their common ground.
But the Jews understood this law and grace perfectly. They didn't.
Well, no, they're, they're not, no, see, I think somewhere along the line, there's somebody out there, or there's a teaching out there that says to them, without Torah, you cannot be saved. There's a teaching out there which is affecting, certainly affecting the Gentiles, and may even be affecting some of the Jewish community, some of the Jewish believers. It's out there in the air, and Paul is the one trying to clarify it. And listen, and the way to clarify it is to simply, say it simply. The Torah was not meant for salvation. The Torah has this other purpose. Stop talking about it in those terms. You see, this is where everybody, in my mind, everybody goes wrong. Because they keep talking about the Torah, the, the, the law of Moses, as if it was a document meant to save mankind. It wasn't meant for that. You know, it has another function, a vital function, but not that one. Okay?
Why do they think they were saved before?
By the grace of God. God, because God, God chose us. God chose us. We're saved. All Israel has a place in the world to come. Okay, so anyway, let's try and get through chapter seven. All right. I find then the principle that evil is present in me, the one who wants to do good. So we have this principle of sin. And he says, I joyfully concur with the law of God in my inner man, but I see a different law in the members of my body, waging a war against the law of my mind, and making me a prisoner of the law of sin. See, so he finally names it. He talks, now we've got these two laws which conflict. One is the law of sin and death, that he's, which he names here.
What is that verse? I'm sorry.
Um, 23. The law of sin, which is in my members, which is conflicting with Torah. Because I want to do the right thing, but this is other law, which, which is, you know, and he's already explained it. The Torah commandment only exacerbates the problem because it makes the sin utterly sinful. But it does not cure it. It doesn't take it away. Right? See, the Torah, you know, Torah never had, had this power to take away sin. Okay, so somehow, so, so let's see where he goes. Uh, he says, all right, so the law of sin, which is in my members, verse 24. Wretched man that I am. Who will set me free from this body of sin and death? You see, it, something else has to happen if I'm going to be healed. Something else has to happen. Because the Torah itself was not meant to do what people are, or at least some people are saying it should be doing.
But Torah pointed to something.
It pointed to something, it, like I said, it has, it has a lot of functions. I gave you the main functions, but it also has all these other things. It does point to a, a cure, if you will, you know, a, a cure that is coming. That, that was future, when God gave the Torah, let's put it that way. Of course, always, you know. No, no. There's always point. Okay, there's always pointing to that. The letter of Hebrews makes that abundantly clear, you know. All right, so, so he says, in verse 25, he talks about the cure. Says, thanks be to God that through Messiah Yeshua, our Lord, so then, on the one hand, I myself with my mind am serving the law of God, but with the other, my flesh, the law of sin. But he says that the remedy, even though I'm locked into this problem that I have, there is a remedy.
Yes, hallelujah.
And the remedy is, is elaborated on in chapter eight. Okay, so since we have five minutes, we'll start. Even though you don't have your notes yet. Okay? See if I do have anything on it. All right, so God, so he elaborates on this. Okay, so he says, right, so he says, thanks be to God through Messiah Yeshua, our Lord, so then, on the one hand, I myself with my mind am serving the law of God, but on the other, with my flesh, the law of sin. So he goes, and remember, when this was written, it was a letter. There were no divisions. He kept writing, okay? Says, therefore, there is now no condemnation for those who are Messiah Yeshua. Why? For the law of the Spirit of Life in Messiah Yeshua has set you free from the law of sin and death. That's where we're going to stop. There's a third law, right? See it up there? The third law. The, the law of the Spirit of Life in Messiah Yeshua. Nullifies the law of sin and death. What the Torah could not do, weak as it was in the flesh, which he says later, which he says in the next verse or two. Yeah, we'll look at verse three. For what the law could not do, it could not do because it wasn't meant to do that. If God meant it to do that, it would have been able to do that. Okay, weak as it was through the flesh, God did, sending his own son in the likeness of sinful flesh, and as an offering for sin, he condemned sin in the flesh. This was the goal all along. Torah was not meant to save people, you know, do the law, do the law, and you get something. You earn your salvation. It was never for that. It couldn't do it. It couldn't do it because there was a weakness, and the weakness was me. So, so God sent his son, which he always intended to do, in order to nullify the law of sin and death. Okay?
You know, we, we struggled through all this because we have this map here with us. But think for a minute, what if there was no Israel, there was no Bible, there was no Jewish people, there was no temple? And let's say, in Rome, Yeshua shows up, performs all the miracles he did that we read about. But the Roman emperor says, wait a minute, I'm God, crucifies him on the cross, he dies raised from the dead. Would we ever hear about it? It wouldn't even be a footnote in the history book.
I wouldn't be there anyway.
Yeah.
To.
Yeah.
Analyze this. So we are in the, we're in the flesh, we are, also, we have the law. So we have the key, the grace, so let's just keep in touch with that, try to, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand the meaning because.
Okay, so again, what, what, what he says here, you see, where, he tells us that we are free from the law of sin and death. So whatever that, whatever the effect, the penalty, I should say, of that might be, we have been freed by the law of life in Messiah Yeshua, Spirit of Life, right? Now, he is, after he finishes his theological argument, by the way, he's going to tell us what that ought to result in, for now. Because there's, there is another stage of salvation which we have yet to go through. You know, we're, we're, humanity is not finished, and, and my, my faith in Messiah Yeshua has not yet completed the work. Paul says, for instance, in the letter, in a letter to the Ephesians, that we have been given a down payment on that which we will receive at the end of the age. Right? He says, the spirit has been given to you as a down payment. It's not the whole thing. There's more to come. That which is, which is, how does he put it in 1 Corinthians? That which is not glorified will be glorified. I forget exactly the terminology he uses when he talks about resurrection, which is when we receive all of this in fullness. Yeah, corruption, into corruption, exactly. So there's a stage in which, you know, we're going through, that we're going through to receive the rest of it. But in the meantime, as a result of who we are in Messiah Yeshua, it should result, and what we must strive for, is this unity in the faith that Messiah Yeshua is, should be providing for us. We'll get there. You know, Paul will, you know, say, hey, look, you know, now that, you know, this is all, this is all the stuff you have, now, use it to the, you know, to the benefit of all, you know, we'll get there. Okay, but just know where we stand now, that we have these law, that we have law. We have, unfortunately, sin, the law of sin and death interferes with that. But God has made a way through the law of the Spirit of Life in Messiah Yeshua. So that's where we are. I feel, I'm very tired. I have to tell you, this, this Bible slides exhaust me. I told you why I didn't want to do this.
Well, you're praying for me, everyone. I just want you to remember that the Spirit of Life that is alive in me nullifies the law of sin and death that is trying to happen.
Amen. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to stop the recording. Thank you, folks. It was a great one.